There you are.
Can you start us off, please?
Absolutely, happy to. Mission: The Falmouth Public Schools creates world-class student learning experiences. Our Clippers are empowered to pursue their goals with curiosity, integrity, and resiliency. Vision: Clippers are creative, inquisitive, and engaged learners who participate in their community as socially responsible citizens. Clippers effectively communicate and solve problems that impact the world around them.
Thank you, thanks. So we'll start off with public comment. Please limit your comments to two minutes per individual to items not on the meeting agenda. There's no debate or action taken on public comment items, but the committee can take items under advisement or have items requested be on a future agenda. Melissa, can I task you? I see that we have a lot of people joining us. I don't know if they're just listening or if they have comment, but can you be our timekeeper?
Absolutely, yeah.
Thank you, ma'am. So just let us know when we hit two minutes, that'd be awesome. So at the top of the list, I have Lori Andrade. I don't know if who's Ryan or Mike, if you can.
Hello, I only see my own picture, so I didn't realize if my video would be on or off. I do have a statement that I'm reading in conjunction with Jim DC, who is our FEA Vice President. So if he is the next, I'm just curious, if he's the next person, then I will read my part and then he can continue with his part, or I'm going to ask that we could be unmuted together?
So Lori, I just want to make sure that you understand what our policy is around public comment, because I did get a statement a little, like five minutes ago. And if that's the statement that you're hoping to read, I'm going to let you know ahead of time that that's not something that would fall under an allowable comment for public comment, because it speaks to a personnel matter and it directly talks about a specific member of our staff. So I don't know if you have something else that you would like to share or speak about, or if Jim does, that would be definitely allowable. But the statement that I saw, I can't allow to be read, because it's a violation of our policy on public comment.
Thank you, Kelly. Where is your policy located?
It's policy, actually, I pulled it up just to be sure that I, I didn't want to cut you off unnecessarily. So it's policy BEDH, and it specifically says that "Public session, the school committee cannot hear personal complaints of school personnel, nor any complaint, nor against any member of the school committee. There are administrative channels and proper means for disposition of legitimate complaints involving staff." So it's very specific. Is there anything else that, other than that one particular statement? And of course, you are more than welcome to send that statement to the school committee if it's something that you want them to see. It just can't be read in public comment.
So I'm just curious, and I don't want to belabor this, but how is that a complaint?
It's regarding school personnel.
I understand, but I'm just curious how it's a complaint?
Well, you know, I don't think that we can have this conversation, because then we would end up discussing the actual content of the statement that I read. So, you know, I encourage you to go ahead and send it to the school committee if you would like to, but this is just not the venue for, for reading a statement about personnel. Is there anything else that you or Jim would like to present on or have public comment on, or was it just this item?
I will not speak for Jim, but I will speak on behalf of the Falmouth Educators Association as their president, and I will contend that this is not a complaint. And so I do not feel that it violates your policy.
Okay. So, thank you for, for sharing your opinion, but I stand by my decision. So let's move on and we can promote Jim and see if he has anything else that he would like to speak about.
Thanks, Kelly.
Hi, Jim.
Sorry. No, I just wanted to clarify one thing on this, that we're only be reading a press release, and that's what the FEA had put together, and that was what we thought we would be able to read tonight, is what we are sending out.
And I certainly can't tell you to not send out a press release, but the public comment section of the meeting, we have to follow our own policies.
No, I'm, I'm on that. I just wanted to make sure that we understood what it was that we were going to be reading.
Okay, all right. I didn't realize it was a press release, so thank you for clarifying.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? It's a long list, and I don't see any other hands, but that doesn't mean that there isn't anyone else. Is there anyone else that has public comment for tonight? Okay. Okay, so first on our agenda is an update from the superintendent. I'll turn it over to you, Lori.
Yes, thank you, Kelly, and good evening, everyone. Scott's not with us this evening, or Dr. Parkinson, but, and I certainly cannot do either justice, but I will just make the announcement that, and I also sent in my letter last Friday, but Falmouth as a whole has moved into yellow, and in, we went down to a 4.07 from the week before when we were in red. That was a 4.49, and the week before that was even higher. So we've had, Falmouth has lowered their percent positivity for three weeks in a row. We were in red for two weeks, we're back in yellow, and the Cape as a whole is turning back to yellow. Even the ones that remain in red, their percent positivity has lowered as well. So there is, there's still a few that, that went a little higher, but for the most part, we're, we're making progress in the right direction, so I did want to share that. And then, so that's all about the COVID, but I do have another, a presentation that, under my update that I'd like to share.
Yeah, please, I was muted. I was trying to say, please go ahead, but I was on mute.
Okay. So in response to the newspaper article concerning the Falmouth Public Schools' discipline data, we, we want to begin sharing information with the school committee and the community. We have had internal work over the last two-plus years, and we, we just, we want to be able to start sharing that with you. We were troubled by the, the data in the article. My office reached out to the Citizens for Juvenile Justice to understand the data that was reported. We have not heard back, but we will continue to try to contact them so that we can get a better understanding. But tonight, we want to report the data that Desi reports on the public website, and we'll have Joan Woodward go over the data, and then followed by Mary Gans, and then, and then I'll circle back at the end to discuss a little bit what we're doing district-wide. So at this time, I'll turn it over to Joan.
I'm going to share my screen. Okay, thank you. Okay, so as Dr. Dewar did just share with you, the data that I'm going to be presenting is we are going to be looking at the suspension and expulsion data. We're going to review from data from the 2017, 2018 school year up until this school year. Okay, so, oh, excuse me. Oh, no, hold on a minute. How do I go back? Oh, here we go, forgive me. Okay, so I, forgive me for that. So what I wanted to do is first start with some of the demographics that I'll be sharing with you, and it's also based off of the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, how they report out demographics. So the first data piece that I wanted to share is our enrollment by selected populations. Again, you can see that we have 2017, 2018 school year up to the current year that we have, and as Lori had stated that this is information as the Department of Education reports out the data.
So Joan, can I ask you a quick question before you get going?
You should.
Are we going to be able to get this? Because rather than, I'm just realizing that I'm going to start frantically trying to jot some stuff down. Can you send this after?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Most certainly, yeah. Okay, so, but the, per Desi, we have selected populations?
Sorry, Joan, I just, I, I wish that I had this beforehand, so I could have kind of looked at it and had questions prepared. It's not on the agenda. I mean, I, I get that it falls under the update from the superintendent, but I just, I kind of wish that we had it beforehand.
Yeah, and that was, that's on me, because, you know, it wasn't until late in the day on Friday that I had a chance to catch up with Lori and, and ask if this was even possible. And I didn't know, the agenda had already been posted, I didn't know whether or not it would even be available to have the information for, in time for today. So that's, that's why, you know, and it does, with us meeting every other week, you know, I didn't want to wait either. So, you know, that's totally on me, and I apologize that, you know, no one had the opportunity to look at it ahead of time, but, you know, I anticipate that we're going to keep talking about it, so I, you know, I don't think this is going to be a one-off kind of conversation. So if that makes you feel any better, you know, that we can just absorb it or take it in, and then maybe come back to it at our next meeting, but at least to get you the numbers, I thought, would be, it would be better to not wait.
I guess, I just, I like to look at data and check out my agenda and be prepared, and given an opportunity to kind of peek at things. I appreciate that it came in late in the game, but I just kind of wish that I had it before.
I totally understand. Okay, sorry, Joan.
That's quite all right, and I will ensure that this gets to immediately after the meeting. So the selected populations, again, as I was saying, from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, they report out students that have first language, which is not English, English-language learners, students with disabilities, high needs, and economically disadvantaged. So this is just our, our demographics for our student enrollment from 2017 to 2018 through this school year. The next piece of demographics as reported by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education are our students as they are identified by their race and ethnicity. So the categories that fall under race and ethnicity are African-American, Black, Asian, Hispanic, Native American, white, Native American, Pacific Islander, and multirace, non-Hispanic. So again, our enrollment data from 2017, 18 through this school year, and just what our student population makes up in, here in our district. So when we look at, yes, Melissa?
Sorry. I appreciate the race and ethnicity. Is that federally sanctioned, or are we able to kind of break it down based on the folks that actually live in the community?
It's by how student, our students identify, and then through our student information system, then that's how, these are the categories in which the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education report out across the Commonwealth.
Okay, so just to be clear, the Department of Education, so Desi determines these categories, even though they don't really fit our community. I mean, some do, but there's, we have other folks in our community that are not mentioned.
Right, but this is how we have to report data out?
I, I get it, I just, I'm kind of sharpening the pencil there, that's all.
Okay. So when we look at our discipline trends, this is information, again, through the Department of Education, that pulls all of our data that is through our student information system, which is our SIMS data, that gets collected three times a year, October 1st, March 1st, and the end of the school year. So most data does get reported out through an October 1st data point, but again, the end-of-the-year reporting also gives us information throughout the school year. So when we look at this information, I first want to just, if you can bring your attention down, right down to the bottom of the screen, where the percentages represent the number of students disciplined, not our total number of students enrolled. So this is discipline data. So if you can bring your attention over to the right side of the screen, this is state data. So these are the categories in which they are looking at the discipline. They look at in-school suspension, which is this dark blue. They look at out-of-school suspensions, which is lighter blue. They look at expulsions, then even lighter blue, and for this year, there's incidences of violence. Now, it's important to note, as we go through this data, this isn't going to be consistent, because the Department of Education, for whatever reasons they chose, this is not a consistent data point that the Desi reports out. On the right-hand side of the screen is the, the percentages of in-school suspension, out-of-school suspension, expulsion, and incidence of violence for the state. The middle data here, this is our district, so this is across all of our students in the district, and then when we come to the left-hand side of the screen, the where it says our school, this is actually representing Falmouth High School, our data. So as you can see, you know, our numbers in the district do exceed that of the numbers over here in the state in in-school suspensions, and you can also, you know, in, in-school suspensions, and then when we hop on over to the, the high school, you see that our, our data does exceed both the district data as well as the state data. And again, this is for the 2017, 2018 school year. So what you're going to see is, the next two slides is also, again, just keep in mind that this is the number of students disciplined, not our total enrollment. So in 2018, 2019, you'll notice, again, I'll let everyone just take a moment and kind of look, look across from the state percentages to our school district percentages to our high school. And again, you'll see that in many instances, both we are, our district and our high school, so our district exceeds the state, and our high school exceeds the district data. So on the slide before, our number represented 98 students. In this particular chart for 2018, 2019, our number of students disciplined was 103. And then, as we move into 2019, 2020, you're going to see that our numbers do go down. The number is 43. Again, the state data, the district data, and the schools' data. So again, we are exceeding the state data, but you'll notice that the trends, both across the district and the schools, from the three years of data that I just shared with you, does show a decrease in our trends, in our discipline trends, both at the district level and the school level. So now, what I'm going to do is, I want to share with you expulsion data. Again, as you see this, you'll notice in the last three screenshots that I shared, excuse me, on slides that I shared, you didn't see any data in expulsion, under the expulsion category, and that's because of the low number. So the Department of Education does suppress some of the information if the groups, if the number within the groups are low enough that it becomes identifiable information, or if you were to calculate out from a percentage, if we had numbers that represented less than .05, it, it would ultimately be counted as a 0%. But in an efforts to make sure that we're being very transparent, when you look at our expulsion data, for the last five school years, we did have one expulsion. It was in the year 2018, 2019, and the demographics for that particular student, it was a white student with no special education status, no EL status, no free and reduced status. And that, that's the only expulsion data that we have to report out for the last five years. Then, as we get into the suspension data, this is data as it's represented through the, again, through the Department of Education. So this is the year-end data. For 2017, 2018, I'm going to use them, then each progressing year up until this year, but we do not have our data for this year yet, because we're currently still in the data. So when, when you look at the data, which is why I started with our demographics, you'll notice that our selected groups, so that's up here, so we start with all students. We have our English learners, our economically disadvantaged, our students with disabilities, and our high-need students. Then they break it out in gender, and if anyone is very mathematically quick when they're looking at this, when you look at both the male and the female, if on any of these slides, you'll notice that they do not add up to the total all students. That's because in these, again, with lower numbers, they're not reporting out students that identify as non-binary. So if you'll see any discrepancy right there, that, that would make up for our student, for the all-student numbers. And underneath gender, then the other student demographics that the Department of Education looks at is, like I said, it's students broken down by race and ethnicity. So if we were to look at all students, we see that in 2017, 2018, at Falmouth High School, there were 871 students, of which 98 students were disciplined, and the discipline would comprise of in-school suspensions, out-of-school suspensions, and expulsions. Then you come over and you'll see the percentage. So of the 871 students, 8.7 of our students were, had an in-school suspension, and 6.1 students had an out-of-school suspension. So then you can break it across any of our students, any of the subgroups within our students. This is how we break down the data. I am, now that I just shared that, I do want to just bring to your attention how we break down the data even more specifically. So if we're on the next slide, I'm going to walk you through a little bit more of the data. I shared a little bit up here with the all students, but if we look at one of our, our student groups, in this instance, we have the Hispanic-Latino students. There are 40 students, so out of our 871 total students, 40 of them identify as Hispanic-Latino, seven of which were disciplined, and then we have the 15% that had in-school suspension and 10% that had out-of-school suspension. So we take it one step further on how to read this data, is, again, we have the total enrollment of 871 students. Forty, which is in this first category, of whom identified as Hispanic-Latino, and then seven who were disciplined. So in-school suspension, out-of-school suspension, and/or an expulsion. So when we look at the 15% for the in-school suspension, it's 15% of the 40, the total 40 Hispanic and Latino students that received an in-school suspension. So out of this seven, it means six of these seven students received an in-school suspension. When we come over to the next category, we see that 10% of the 40 students received an out-of-school suspension. So that's four students out of these same seven students that received an out-of-school suspension. So this number seven, you can't uniquely, you can't just take the 15% of in-school suspension and the 10% of the out-of-school suspension and try and add those numbers together, because the seven is a unique count, as some of the students may be counted in more than one category. So for an example, you could have a student that received an in-school suspension and an out-of-school suspension. So it's, it's just not a one-for-one correlation when you're, you're adding. So that's how we look at the information presented in the tape. So then, we, we move on to the next year, so Falmouth High School suspension data for 2018 and 2019. I'll give everyone a minute to look through, but again, when we look at all students, there were 862 students, 103 of them in which were disciplined, 8.5% within school suspensions, 7.4 students with, percentage of students with out-of-school suspensions, and again, you can read through to any of our subgroups to to look at those percentages. And I'm happy to put any of the slides, again, after we get through the data. And again, you have the same representation of the data for the 2019, 2020 school year. Again, all students, 43 disciplines, 2.1% in-school, 3.4% out-of-school suspension.
Joan?
Yes.
Is this graph must be impacted by the fact that we were not in school part of the year, right? So it's hard to compare it to the other two, correct?
Well, if, yes, there would, you'd have to draw the correlation, but yes, because again, it's the numbers we have to report out at the end of the year. We have to make sure that we're reporting out all of our student discipline data, but Carrie, you are correct, because we did, we did not have students in our buildings from, you know, as of March, March 13th was the last day through the end of the school year for last year. And that's why you'll notice the number, you know, that the student disciplines number that we talked about, when I talked about in that, that first slide. So we had 43 in 2019, 20, the 103 from the previous year, and the 98 the year before that, 2017, 18. And again, as I stated, we don't have the Desi information, because we haven't, it's not reported out, because we're currently in the school year, but we wanted to make sure that we provided you with any of the, the discipline data, in-school suspension, out-of-school suspension, and expulsions. As of, we report the data out at the end of the month, so this is data as of January 31st, 2021, so this past January 31st. So in this, again, is district data. So across the district, the numbers are low, so again, we want to be mindful about identifiable information. So across the district, there are 3,029 students. To date across the district, we have had two in-school students have been suspended with in-school suspensions, and there's been nine out-of-school suspensions. Of these suspensions, six students have, are on either a IEP or have a five, get accommodations through a 504 accommodation plan. Five of them qualify as free and reduced. We've had no English learners in our data. Nine have been males, two have been females, and out of the race and ethnicity, the multirace, non-Hispanic Latino would be three, and the remaining eight students are, are, identify as white. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Mrs. Gans, who's going to provide you a little bit of information, but I will keep the presentation, oh, actually, should we keep the presentation up right now? I know that's harder for the screen. Is that helpful, or should I stop sharing?
Right. I'm thinking, my personal opinion would be to stop sharing so we can see Mary, but, you know, I do think that, you know, to Melissa's point, you know, this is, this is a lot. to Melissa's point, you know, this is, this is a lot. And I think we all are going to need to, you know, hear the rest of, of course, what everybody is going to add on to it. But I think we're all going to need to, this, I, I don't know that I can process it all this fast to generate the questions that I might have. So I'm going to say right now, from the start, that we're going to need to have this on our next agenda again. Because we're going to need to be able to look at it in the way that it deserves to be looked at. So for whatever that's worth. And so, Mary, sorry, I didn't mean to like make you be on screen and make you, you know, wait for me to talk at the same time. Sorry.
No, and I, and I agree, and this deserves a very deep dive into very specific data. So I totally agree with that. And I do want, I, I'm just going to speak to what we've done at the high school over the past few years with respect to discipline and how we're looking ahead to discipline. And just to let the school committee know that I take this extremely seriously, the issues that have been raised. And we are very committed to examining how issues involving racial and social justice can guide us in developing the strategies that we use with respect to student discipline. So back in 2014, the student discipline law was actually changed to, it was aimed at reducing exclusions from school, both in-school and out-of-school suspensions. So since that time, and since I've been at the high school, Tom McManaman and Henry St. Julian and I, we have tried to implement alternative forms of discipline that don't include excluding a student from the classroom. And those have included different types of restorative practices, mediation, counseling services, transition times. And Tom, Henry, and I have attended restorative practice workshops. Last October, we actually had a school-wide professional development day where all teachers rotated through a cultural proficiency professional development session and a de-escalation professional development session, both of which incorporate concepts of restorative practices and relationship building. We then had, so, so this has been sort of, we've been aware that student discipline is always an issue, especially at the high school level, level. And we certainly are cognizant of the fact that we want to, obviously, not discipline students and certainly in-disciplining students, be more restorative and less punitive. Last year, we also brought on a woman, Jessica Minahan, for professional development. In October, we had her present to the faculty, and it was very well-received. And her professional development training was aimed at managing challenging and disruptive students in the classroom. And we actually got a very generous professional development grant from the FEF to bring her back this year for three days. And she was going to actually go into classrooms, work with, you know, do observations, and really help us come up with really good strategies. Because discipline doesn't just start at the administrative level, you know, it starts in the classroom. And, you know, we're, we're all a team at the high school. So we all want to be on the same page with how we build relationships with students and how we respond to, to different behaviors. Unfortunately, because of COVID, we literally had her present to the faculty on March 3rd. And it was really well-received. Every, I think it was 99% of the faculty said they wanted her to come back. So we got the grant, but then because of COVID, we could not have her come back this year. So that's a little bit at a standstill. She still, though, will come back once we're allowed to have her come back. The other thing that we've started, I started a racial and social justice committee over the summer. We have 25, actually maybe 30 faculty members on that. And we've started a Clippers for Social and Racial Justice Schoology group and student group. And we already have 21 students on that. And we are all committed to just making sure that all students feel heard. Student voice is so important in all of this, so that students feel heard and that their rights are respected and that we move forward in a positive way.
Thanks, Mary.
Thank you. Yep. Thank you, Joan and Mary. And I, just to extend the practices to the entire district, the summer of 2019, we began our restorative justice practice across the district and then spent the 19, 20 school year with our instructional leadership, not only continuing our learning around restorative practice, but also looking at our, our data district-wide and examining those practices that we can improve. As you know, we also have, have Kalise Swornam as our consultant. And we have reached out to Kalise because the, the discipline and, and how we analyze the data and our next steps certainly falls into our diversity, equity, and inclusion goal. And just to also just be real intentional about this type of work as well, in addition to the, to the overall work that we're doing. So we are taking steps. You know, we recognize that there's always room for growth, and we are committed to the work.
Thank you. So I'm glad you brought up the, the goal, because it's our goal too, right? So, you know, as a school committee, we have set that as a goal that we want to be working on. So I think, so my first glance, it looks like, you know, there is some type of skew in the, in the discipline data. But it's really hard for me to capture it, looking at the straight numbers. I'm wondering if we could have, you know, I, I don't know what the right way to look at it would be, but visuals are just always so much easier for me. For the next meeting, to be able to look at that difference, I think would be really helpful.
Yes, and we can keep this as an ongoing conversation. So not only will we send out this presentation to you, but any questions that, that between now and our next meeting that we could actually provide additional information, that gives us an opportunity at the next presentation. And Kelly, I, I'm with you. When you first brought it up, I, I think that it was important for us to get started. I'm sorry we didn't have this, you know, for you to look at in advance. But I too did not want to wait, you know, two weeks. And we really wanted to be able to present it and be able to explain it, you know, in, in a, a way that could be understood. And, and now you have time to look at it and adjust and, and then come back with questions. Totally understand if there's none tonight. But we look forward to, to hearing what those might be over the next two weeks, so that we can continue the conversation.
Does anybody have questions? And also understanding that, you know, you might not get an answer tonight too, because I sort of threw this at Lori on Friday afternoon. So there might not be, you know, it might have to wait until the next time if we don't have the answers, because it was sort of last minute. So Natalie and then Leah?
Great. May I share my screen for a second?
I don't know. Can she? I don't know.
Do you mind? I'm just going to share.
Oh, I don't know if you have the ability. Does she have the ability to share?
Well, let's see. Let's see if I could share. One thing, and, and I do appreciate that we're starting to have this conversation, because it's a conversation that, you know, frankly, needs to happen. And we do need to do a deep dive into this. It would be helpful also when we're looking at the presentation. And first, Joan, I so appreciate your pulling that together, short moments, notice. If it could resemble the DESI information, like their grid would also be helpful. Because, so for example, this is the high school for 2019, 2020. And so if we could look at it, and I know it's challenging, but as close as we can get, because I like to compare charts, you know, it just makes it easier. That's how my work brain works. Because hands down, if we just do a quick snapshot at this, if we just look at these statistics and the disparity, it, it's alarming. I mean, there is no way, no way else to describe that. So if we could sort of start looking at it in terms of, you know, the in-school, the out-of-school removals, and I believe a third category relates to getting law enforcement involved, that would be helpful for, for me as well, to sort of see it in, in this way.
Natalie, since you've looked at this page clearly, do you know if the, like, for the percent in-school suspension, what is that a percent of? Is that a percent of the students disciplined? Or is it a percent? This is what happens when I try and math on the fly. I'm sorry.
Right, yeah, exactly. So my understanding, and, you know, Joan and Lori, feel free to correct me if I'm wrong. But my understanding is this represents the percentage of which, you know, for example, multiracial, non-Hispanic Latino make up 10.9% of all in-school suspensions, right? So that's how I read this versus, you know, down here.
Because that's not, right, and that's not how Joan, this is where we're, I think we're going to run into trouble, is that we need to make sure we're all talking about the same thing.
Exactly. So if we could sort of have it, like, let's pick one format and sort of have that consistently, because it is, it's a little confusing to, to toggle between the presentations. So that would just be my one request, because this is the, the report that I pulled from DESI.
Correct. So Joan, could we have Joan pull back up her presentation, the explanation slide, and run through that again? Is that possible?
I can't even, where, Joan, where'd you go? Oh, there you are.
Yeah.
Oh dear. That's not what I wanted to share. Yes, just, if you could just give me a moment, I'll pull that back up.
Kelly, may I ask a question while she's doing it?
Oh, yeah.
Because it's to that point. It's the same thing about the percentages in terms of what should we be looking at to add up to 100%, right? So at some point, if it is a percentage of this, whatever category it is, somewhere it should add up. And I don't see that, so I had the same type of question.
Yeah, I see what you mean.
Can you hear me?
Yep. Go ahead.
So I think that Natalie, this hopefully helps to answer it. But absolutely, we can go back in and we can drill through the data to make sure that it is being represented, you know, across all data points the same. But the, so if you were to look at, I'm just going to, I'm going to jump ahead for just a few more slides. So to what you had just pulled up, the student groups, hopefully that looks exactly the same, because again, this is information right off of the DESI website. So these would be all the student groups. These are, and again, I know I'm not in the same year that you were looking at. The, the students represents the total students. So total students for the district and the total students within each student group. The number of students disciplined, which is the combination of in-school suspension, out-of-school suspension, expulsion, the ultimate setting, those pieces. And then it is the, so the percentages fall to the number of students disciplined within the student group.
Yes.
Is what we're, I mean, I, I think, yeah. And what, I mean, I think we're all trying to get to the same thing. You know, we want, we want to have an understanding of whether or not there are certain groups of any type at school that are overrepresented in disciplinary numbers. I mean, we're all trying to get to that same place. I just don't know what the right way to go about doing that is. You know, because DESI is doing it one way, and this seems to do it a little bit differently, you know. And so maybe, maybe that's what we need to also do, is be, be thinking or get additional help from somebody else on how we're supposed to be examining the data to accomplish the thing that we're trying to accomplish. Because I think we're all trying to do the same thing.
I agree, but Kelly, these came right off the DESI website. This is DESI data.
Do you want me to share it again?
This is not, this is not internal, real-time data. This is the, the most recent reported data off a DESI website.
So.
So if the only, when we screenshot, the, the, what we did is we just did not do, we did not include the rest of the, the chart that, that Natalie shared. We screenshot the in-school and out-of-school suspensions. The expulsion data is all zero, and we wanted to show that in a different slide, because even though it's zero, there was one student in one of the years. And we wanted to be clear with that.
Okay. So I think I got, so Natalie, but can I come back to you before? I know Leah still is holding her question, but so how, I want to make sure that I understand what you were asking for, because now I don't think I understand. Can you tell me again?
Yeah, so I think that this is going to be an evolving situation, right? Where this is something we're going to look at. I think it's not just about us, it's also about the community. And we need to present this information in a way that everyone understands it without having to have an explanation of percentages or what it stands for. So, you know, a very simple, this is the group, this is the percentage, not necessarily a big group, but how many, how many Natalie's got suspended last year, right? Like, whatever you want to call it. Like, I think that's what we need to do, because people are confused. And, and the more we can drill down and simplify it, the better. And it also may clear up misunderstandings, right? It could go either way, but we need to simplify this.
Yeah, okay, I got it now. Thank you. Thanks for helping me think through it. Um, Leah?
So, can you guys, can you hear me? Okay, okay. I, I just wanted to add to Natalie's, just her point. I, I think that what is really helpful is that, that is a public document. So anyone can go onto DESI's website and get that information. I think it would be really helpful for the school committee and for the community to understand where you can get that information and what that data shows. So instead of using a chart that's generated from Falmouth Public Schools, bringing us onto the website and showing the town, the community, how we can get that information and what that information means, I think would be so valuable. Because DESI does, they put all of that information for anyone within the state, within the community, within the world, to be able to access and to analyze. But what happens is people don't always have the, the understanding of what those numbers show. So you get, you get some people reading it certain ways, other people reading it different ways, and there's not clarity on that. And that's where a lot of disagreements can come and misunderstanding. So, and, and that was not exactly what my, my question was going to be. But I, I do think that if we could, if we could look at what is available to the public and go through that, that would be great. Another piece is that today I heard a lot of different programs and things that are being put into place to, to support more understanding around potential discriminatory practices that have existed or to, to really combat anti, be anti-racist and anti-discriminatory. I think it would be really helpful when we're talking about restorative practice workshops, to get a sense of what that is. When we're talking about a racial injustice staff committee, what does that mean? What is it that you guys are doing? Because we hear a lot of things, but I don't know what the details are. What, what is really happening? Are people really diving into this data? What, how do students feel? What are students concerned about in the student group? What are the issues? And are they looking at this data? That would be really helpful. So that's, just in, in now kind of getting a sense of, if we're going to look at this data and really talk about it, let's also really talk about what's happening in the schools, so we can get a good sense of that.
I think that's right, because that gives us, you know, next steps, because we have to plan for where we're going to go next.
Kelly, can we, can we answer Leah's question? I think it is really important. And again, I just say that the data we showed today, we actually did a screenshot off of the DESI website. This was not any internal data we pulled together, because we wanted to make sure that what we were presenting is what, when people go to the DESI website, that they're seeing the same thing. And that's why we selected to do it that way. And so I'm going to have Sonya, if you don't mind, take a few more minutes and just let her walk through, so people would know how to get there. Because I think it's an, an important point that Leah brought up. And, and why wait two weeks when we can do it right now? If that's okay.
Sure.
Okay.
All right, I am trying to share my screen with you. Let's see if it wants to cooperate. All right, so you should all be seeing a Google search if that just went well. So there is a way, so you can Google search, I put in mass DESI, school and community profiles. You can also get to this from DOE's site. And every year, actually, we're going through the process right now, every year, because Falmouth Public Schools receives Title I funding, we actually link directly to this data from our school websites as well. But this is most commonly the way in, in talking to various members, both of our school community and our greater community, people have told me that this is how they're accessing it through this dashboard. And there's certainly more here than simply the data that we were looking at today. And this is how you can. And this is how you can access information for the entire Commonwealth. The map is interactive. When you click on the county, you can see all of the districts that make up Barnstable County. And then you can drill into Falmouth. And then today specifically, we were, we were looking at Falmouth High School data. You can look at each of the schools, and you can also look at the district as a whole. So I'm just going to bring us to where that, we just saw the data that we were looking at. When you pull up the dashboard initially on the Department of Ed website, it breaks it down by general students, teachers, assessment. And accountability is where we were. We were actually looking at the school report card for some of our data, and then student discipline for other of our data. So the initial table that Joan showed at the top, that had the bars that were in the different blues, that came from the school report card. And then this is where both the data that Joan showed, which truncated and did not include the zeroed columns, and then what Natalie had projected, which is this entire table. So it's, it's in the school and commute, school and district profile section of the Department of Education's website.
Sonya, two things I'd like to do, if you could go to the, the, another slide that actually doesn't have. Did we, did we explain why there's blanks on, on the, because if it's six or fewer, it's suppressed? So the, in the case we did, we may have already said it, but the, if you look at the, for instance, the American Indian, Alaskan, we have four, because it's only four, they do not complete the rest of the chart. So just, I just wanted to explain that, why there would be so many blanks on, on this. The second thing that I wanted to, I really wanted to answer Andrea's question. If you could go, I mean, I can answer it from this one, I guess, but there's just a lot of blanks there. So I don't know if you could switch back to a data, to the 1819 possibly. So I think Andrea, you asked a question about, you know, why it doesn't add up to 100? Or why it won't add up to the, in many of these categories, they may be in more than one category. A student could be, so if you look under the students' discipline, obviously that adds up to more than 103. So a student could be in more than one category. So I don't know if that was, if, does that answer your question, Leah? Or I'm sorry, Andrea?
Um, I understand that, because obviously the male female is a part of that. Even if you're just looking within a specific category such as race, then that I would expect within those subcategories would add to 100. But I, I think there might be some issue there, because now you've explained the zeroed out, less than six parts.
Okay.
That, that still has a percentage, even though it's a low one, those numbers would still get added into a total within that, that category. I'll, I'll play with it a little bit and see what I get with numbers adding up.
Okay.
Okay.
And then on this year, 1819, you see the percent school with a school-based arrest. Sonya, can you go back to the other year that you, we just showed? I don't know which one you. Okay, so you see the school-based arrests, and then you see another category, percent of students with law enforcement referral. I do want to state that because there's a law enforcement referral, this often gets reported different from district to district. But for us, because of our positive relationship with our SRO, that many times the referral often just is an opportunity for the, our SRO to sit down with a student and have a discussion, a conversation, trying to be proactive, and we look at it that way. Our relationship with our SROs have been very positive. So I just, that category does get reported slightly different. So, and I don't know, I don't want to put Mary on the spot, I don't know if you want to speak anymore to that, or?
Yeah, we, we have, it, it really could just be a conversation with Ryan Hurt. And we check off that on a discipline referral form, that then Julie Payne reports to the state. It, it's reported as a referral, but we didn't really necessarily refer a student to the SRO for punitive or criminal purposes at all. It was really, you know, the student's struggling, Ryan Hurt is great in relationship building with students. He has been as an SRO. And so it really could just be a conversation about, you know, you've got some behaviors going on right now. Let's talk about what kind of community supports are out there. What can Ryan hurt? Or maybe there's things even Ryan Hurt has referred people to, you know, Children's Co. He's, he's talked to students about things like that, too. So it's not really a punitive criminal type thing, which is how it appears on the graph.
Correct. So, so just wanted to show again, so when we did our screenshot, we did the screenshot from the student group over to the out-of-school suspension, because we actually have zeros on the expulsion and zeros on every other category except, except this new category that was added in 1920. And, and there is, again, some confusion on, on what the reporting of that is. So I just wanted to be clear, when you go in, why you see it this way? And what we were presenting in our slides, we were focusing in on the in-school and out-of-school suspension data.
And I can't see, oh, now I can. Did anybody else have any questions? I couldn't see everybody. Bill?
Yes, can, can everybody hear me?
Yep.
Okay. Several questions. The data that goes into the state, is that only suspensions and only expulsions? Or is that, is that a snapshot of all discipline matters? I think that's my first question. The second question, does the state do this, encompass all discipline? Do they do it once a year? And I guess I would want to know that, can we at Falmouth then do a snapshot of what we do in our discipline every month? Or every couple of weeks, or every two months? How is all that stuff transitioned, or do we just go by DSC on a yearly basis? Which to me is, is not looking and breaking down the discipline the way it should be.
So Bill, I will say that there are points in time that we report our data to the state. What we normally do is we look at our monthly data, our internal, real-time data. Well, the point of not doing that here tonight, because if anyone was going to the DSC website, it's not, it would not be looking at, you know, apples to apples, right? And so we wanted to be clear, if what we were showing is the publicly reported data. And I don't remember exactly the, the data points, I believe the last one is in April, am I correct for the year? I, I don't remember the three points that we actually report. Sonya, if you want to help out there.
October 1st is our annual census. First is our mid-year, and then there's an end-of-year submission, which typically comes, I believe, about the first or second week of July.
Okay.
And that's where DSC breaks everything down, then on a yearly basis.
So those.
Then we at Falmouth can do a snapshot of where we are as far as discipline and internally evaluate that, correct?
Correct, yes.
Thank you.
Yes, and that's been part of our work that we've been doing for the last couple years internally with the admin team, is looking at our, pulling our data from our own website. I mean, our, I'm sorry, our data portal, not website, our data.
Yeah, because I remember that was, I think, one of, in part of your goals, like your first year, was to start looking at that data.
Yes.
Okay, thanks, Bill, for that.
Thank you.
Melissa, and then Andrea?
I just have a quick question. I'm sorry if we clarified this, but are just, are we documenting every conversation with our SRO in that DSC data? So just like a casual conversation is being documented, I, I feel like that's what I heard, but I.
No, no, it wouldn't, no, it would be, it would be in conjunction. For example, if Tom or Henry were meeting with a student and there was a, a discipline write-up, and it doesn't mean it led to a suspension or anything, it could be a detention, or it could be. But they may have brought Ryan Hurt in just to even explain some things, you know, to the student. It would definitely be in conjunction with some kind of a discipline referral. But it's not like we're saying now we're referring you to the SRO, because we want the police to investigate you and, you know, implement, you know, issue charges against you. It's, it's not like that. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm muted, Andrea?
Thank you. So Lori, I, I hear what you're saying, and I absolutely, I don't dispute the data at all from the DSC website. And a point I was going to make, and maybe it's a little bit what Bill was making, is that just because that's the information that DSC cares about and requires us to report, and they want to collect, doesn't mean it's necessarily what is important to us as a district. But I can understand the potential issues with presenting information that is not aligning with that, without being very, very clear, because it could, you know, lead to confusion and information getting reported that, like, like that there's something being, you know, some cooking of the books, when that's not the intention at all. So I think if we ever do anything like that, we'll need to be really, really clear about why we're looking at that information and how it helps us reach our district goals. And to that end, I think, Kelly, you were also mentioning the fact that, just how we visualize this data. And I think an important thing that we're going to want to look at are those trends over time. So you presented the years, but I think what we really want to see is where, in each of those categories, where are those lines going over time? Are we, the work that you're describing, all the things that have been put in place, are they changing those numbers? Because we know where we have been historically, and we need to, in, you know, in the areas where we need to improve, we want to improve, and we'll see that by watching those trends over time. And I guess, so those were comments, and I, my question would be, and I'm assuming that somehow from the, the work that we've done with consultants and some of the professional development, have they given anyone a sense of a timeline on something like this, this work? What should we look forward to? I, I, I'm gonna go out on a limb and say this isn't going to change by next year, but is this a something that is, you know, two years, three years, five years, 10 years? What are we looking at to really change something that obviously has really deep-rooted implications in so many aspects of our society that all come together in our schools, right? If we want to fix this, and we know that it's hard and long work, do we have a sense of what we and our community should be looking to as a, as a timeline for making those changes? We're seeing the results.
I think it's an excellent question, and I would rather, if, if we're doing the workaround restorative practices, then I would, I would like to propose that question to them, because they would certainly have more information. I will say, though, in general, as our, as we begin to work with our youngest students, right? And as they move up and situations become, you know, more intense, or, or some of the behaviors, when we start younger, it, it makes sense that as we get older around these type of practices, that we would see change over time. That in general would make, make sense. So responsive classrooms, our circles, having more, you know, staff trained in the, you know, how to deal with behaviors, and look at the restorative pieces instead of the punitive side of. So that takes time, too, right? So as teachers, you know, kind of learn and grow in that area, and our kids kind of grow up with a different mindset of, you know, the two converge, right? And I think that we'll see. How many years, how long that is, I really do not believe that. I am an expert in that area to be able to answer that. I don't know if Jessica Minahan spoke to that at all, Mary? If, if that was, because I know she's just dealing with the high school, so I don't know if that's something that was.
Yeah, no, that what I've heard in the workshops and the professional development is that in order to get a whole school, let alone a whole, a whole district, all on board with all staff on restorative practices, it's a three-to-five-year goal, but that's just what I've heard in the workshops that I've been in.
Thank you.
So following up a little bit on, on something that Bill and Andrea both touched on, you know, these are the, the pieces of discipline that we're looking at, but there's more to discipline than these pieces. So do we track other things as well? You know, are we, do we have any other ways of looking at additional information to, to make the picture even more clear? Especially like for, I'm thinking even more for younger kids, whether or not we can see. I don't know, I'm wondering if there's anything else that we need to be thinking about.
Yeah, so we, I, I believe that we talked about this. I, I, I don't remember how long ago, but largely our referral, our, our day-to-day referrals were paper central. And we have been moving toward and building in data studio a way of reporting and being able to capture that. So when we realized that it's very, very hard to track the, the day-to-day referrals, we have a stack of papers and they're filed in files, you know, in the cabinets, we, we really needed a solution. And Sonya, can you speak just briefly to the data studio reports that we're building, so that we will have that readily? Sonya?
Sure. So when our instructional leadership team started that process last year, we were on a, of understanding restorative practices and their impact, we were on a similar journey with understanding how we collected discipline and even defined discipline data, because we wanted to capture times where we might redirect a student, give them directions another time, identify when students might have been sleepy, inattentive, because all of those things may be symptomatic of other concerns that we need to address as students. So we had started to move more from the capturing when students were insubordinate or needed to have a detention, or be referred to the office, to actually capturing things in real time on an electronic Google form, and then moving it into a, a real-time data dashboard through the data studio feature. So we had been building it through feedback with our IL and work with our principals, and we had started to workshop at this past spring with our assistant principals. And they had, our entire assistant principals team, representing all seven schools, have given us some very strong feedback to help us adjust it, and then we're kind of moving towards hopefully being able to launch it moving into next year. But we want to capture the full range and understand, and it goes back to work that we had done in the district around adverse childhood experiences or ACEs, and, and really understanding the whole range of impacts and influences on students' behaviors, making sure that they have relationships in their schools that, you know, model good, good behavior and good decision-making, so that hopefully we can influence their success over time.
Terry, sorry.
Okay, and I think sometime, what we need to touch on, too, in disciplines such as suspensions and things like that, are how do mass general laws come into our decisions, too? I mean, we also have to adhere to certain kind of privacy laws or explanations for suspensions. They're not always, I mean, that impacts our decisions, too. So if we could, in getting information, have that parallel information, it might be helpful. Because some people are wondering if there's any legal aspects to our discipline, too. So just throwing that out.
No, Terry, I think that's a very good point. And, and although we can't speak to individual cases, we can certainly speak to the law that kind of guides us, right? And we know, you know, just the confidentiality, in general, we cannot speak about students, individual students whatsoever. But, or in any way that would identify students. The same as DSC suppresses the, the data if it's too small of numbers. We wouldn't be able to, to talk about, you know, a group of students if it was identifiable either. But we can certainly talk about, so we know the, the student privacy laws, but we can certainly talk about, you know, our laws around suspensions, expulsions, on school property, off school property and such. So we can do that too. We'll prepare that. Good question, Terry. Thank you.
So I mean, this is way more robust than I thought we would be able to, that you would be able to pull together on like, you know, a day's notice. So, so I'm really appreciative for all the information and the questions and the, the conversation that we've had, but I also really recognize that there's a lot of community interest in this. And, you know, they may not, people who may have been interested may not have been here for this. So by putting it on our next meeting and maybe we can even do a recap of some of the stuff that we've already talked about just now, especially like how to get to that dashboard and things like that. You know, not to regurgitate, but you know, I, I just think that we, we, you know, to be fully transparent and inclusive, we should make sure that people all have this as well and not just the people who happen to, happen to be here tonight.
Recorded too, so we can make sure it's out there.
True. That is true. That is really true. That's a good point. Thank you. I don't watch the recording, so I don't remember and I never miss a meeting. So. Melissa?
Maybe we could have the 20-plus page document that was shared to us tonight available on the website and the Facebook page. I feel like we're, this is a, we're, we're doing a lot of data analysis on the fly tonight. And there's a lot of community members that are going to have a lot of questions. And I would hope that we would have this data available to everyone as quickly as we can, because I know that there are a lot of people out there that have questions specifically about this, not just in this committee, but in our community.
Any last questions? All right. Thank you guys so much. That was a lot of information. I really appreciate it. Lori, did you have anything else besides that under your update?
No, that was, I wanted to concentrate on this because I thought it was timely and important to begin the conversation.
Okay. Awesome. All right. Thank you. So next on the agenda is the public hearing for the fiscal year 22 budget. Because it's a public hearing, I need a motion to open the public hearing. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion to open the public hearing on the FY 22 budget.
And is there a second?
I have seconds.
Thanks Natalie. And it's a roll call vote. Lisa?
Okay, sorry.
No, it's all right. You were not expecting it.
I was not. I'm number one.
Did you say yes? I'm sorry.
I did.
Okay, Bill? Bill?
Yes.
John?
Bernari, hi.
Leah?
Leah Palmer, yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Melissa?
Melissa Keith, yes.
Natalie?
Natalie Katalopoulos, yes.
Andrea?
Andrea Thorold, yes.
And I'm also a yes. That's everybody, right? Yeah. So that's unanimous. So the fiscal year 22 budget, I think the whole school committee saw the latest update that our chapter 70 allocation is not expected to go down, which is great news. And the final number, if you remember from the presentation, was $51,514,729 for the budget for that year for 22, which is a 2.49% increase over this year. And Patrick and Lori, I don't know if you had anything that you wanted to add before we ask if there's any public comment?
We, just, just so you know, we have completed our tour around all the schools. Where Patrick presented the information and we, at the school committee at the last meeting. So just, just wanted to do that.
And the budget books are available and have been available. And I think the only change was the chapter 70 line. Right? Okay. So this is an opportunity for the public to have comments on the budget. Is there any public comment on the budget? Please raise your hand. Sorry, I'm having trouble with my cursor. I can't get it to, there it goes.
Kelly, I just had a comment.
Oh yeah, go ahead. Go ahead, John.
No, I just want to thank our colleagues on the finance committee too with working with us and offering, you know, good support and guidance and a partnership. You know, I know some of them also shared, you know, a, a concern or a reticence about, you know, needing to do anything with a specialized stabilization fund. And I'm glad that it worked out that we don't need to do anything like that. And I know that that was something that they had mentioned too and, and they were good partners and I appreciate what they do.
Great. Thank you. So I only see one hand and I'm guessing that's a holdover from earlier and I don't see any other comments for the public hearing. So is there a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Thanks, Melissa. And is there a second? John's got the second. And it's a roll call again. And everyone moved on my screen. So now Bill, you're first.
Yes.
And John?
Bernari, yes.
Leah?
Leah Palmer, yes.
Terry?
Terry Medures, yes.
Lisa?
Lisa Hart, yes.
Melissa?
Melissa Keith, yes.
Natalie?
Natalie Katalopoulos, yes.
Andrea?
Andrea Thorold, yes.
And Kelly Welch, I'm also a yes. So passes unanimously. We'll close the public hearing. The next item is the second read on our diversity, equity and inclusion officer job description. As you remember, we saw this before and then everyone caught a redlined updated version of it. Joannie, are you taking this or Lori, who's taking it?
Joannie.
I am.
Thanks.
Can you hear me okay?
Yep, sounds good.
So I can't state it enough times, the affirmative action committee and other advocates for the position have stayed really invested in moving this position through the paces to get us where we are today, both with thoughtfulness and urgency. And frankly, it's super exciting to be getting closer and closer to getting the job description finalized for voting. And so the last time that we met, since the last time that we met on January 11th, Denise Coleman, the HR director for the town, and I met at, with the affirmative action committee and presented the summary of the job description to the affirmative action committee. They produced a thoughtful, thorough and complete recommendation that included the voice of the varied community members that had provided some feedback as well as their own synthesis and, and feedback for the job description. It also included a draft job description with the feedback incorporated in it. So we took that and brought it back to the town and, and district team. And on January 26th, we met, that included Julian Suso, Nancy Taylor, Dr. Dewar, Nettie Kapanopoulos, Denise and myself. And we had a discussion where the edits were incorporated and the feedback. And that's what you're seeing right now in red. And so my appreciation to Denise for being lockstep with me in this whole process and, and carrying quite a bit of water. And she's the one who edited and kept the red font. We thought it would be a good way for you to know the difference between what was presented in the first read and what it looked like after the, the feedback was incorporated. So it would stand out. Last night, on the eighth, there was another affirmative action committee meeting. And they also were presented with a marked, marked up version of the draft that is part of tonight's second read and had a chance to also take a look at it. The committee wanted one edit to be considered. The job description in front of you has bilingual languages listed in the job description, but it's not specific. And so what was requested is that Portuguese and Spanish be added to the job description to make sure, to promote the high incidence of world languages actually spoken in Falmouth, those two. And any additional edits from this committee will be noted before the joint meeting of the school committee and the town board meeting to vote on the final.
Um, so this is now our second chance to have looked at it and I don't, did anybody have any questions about the process or questions after looking at the edits? Leah?
So thank you for the clarification around language because that was one of my questions. And I guess it would say, you know, preferred, right? Is that the way it would be worded probably? So Portuguese preferred or Portuguese and Spanish, which might be a little bit more challenging to get trilingual, but. That.
I understand.
So my question is actually around evaluation of this position. So the supervision, you know, says that it's working under the administrative direction, direction of the town manager and superintendent of schools. But I, I do think with a new position, it is really important to have an evaluator and evaluation process for a position to see how successful the position is and what needs to be improved upon the position. So I'm just wondering, is there, who will be the evaluator? And is there a process that this will be? And, or is this not yet in discussion? I don't, I'm not sure.
Well, we'll continue to have more discussions, but the position is a position that's being supervised jointly by both the town manager and the superintendent of schools, much like the previous position. And so together, we have quite a bit of experience, at least in an educational setting of having more than one supervisor and both being able to give input towards one evaluation of an individual, especially with the different lenses that we have in the school department and the different lenses that they would have on the town level. So I don't think that we're really concerned that it couldn't be a joint evaluation with both the superintendent and the town. There's precedence for that within the school district at least.
Okay. I'm just, my, my question is just because we have, you know, the, in the public school system in Massachusetts, we have an evaluation system and for Falmouth Public Schools, which probably looks different than what the town evaluation system is. And that this probably will have to be a little bit different since it's a joint position. And then I had one other comment. So there are some, some phrases in here and some of them are sentences that are, are really around a code of ethics and ethical and sound judgment. And I, I guess just one of my concerns around just some of the wording is that it's, it's put in some negative wording. And I, I just think that it really is about someone having, you know, good, good judgment and a code of ethics when, you know, engaging in confidentiality and things like that. So I, I just, a recommendation I would have is taking out the negative wording. And for example, I'm just gonna read, there, it's, I don't have pages numbered, but I think it's the third page. Consequences of errors and judgment could result in poor public perception of school or town government and legal repercussions. I just think that having that in the positive of that this is a, a job that, you know, is reflective of our town community. And that, you know, obviously following a code of ethics and sound judgment is important. And that would go with the second page under supervision, which I'm not sure that paragraph really is about supervision. It says engages in discussions with employees, students and possible community members, including parents and guardians. And that this is about the confidentiality piece. So just that, that would probably go in a section that would be about a code of ethics or that's about the confidentiality piece. So I don't know if you wanted that level of detail, but.
I'll take it.
I gave it, so.
Are there other questions or comments or suggestions? Mine are have that level of detail too. So go ahead, John.
Yeah, I would be inclined on where it said the language preference. I see how it says bilingual or plus. I don't, I don't, I think you, you know, you might limit yourself with candidates if you say it's mandatory. I like what Leah said as far as preferred, you know, whatever the verbiage is of however we're defining it to have it say preferred, you know, so then you're not, you might have someone with a lot of positives on one hand and then maybe not have that. So you, anytime you have really finite items of that nature, you may limit yourself. Obviously preferred or is a, is a good way to phrase it. And then the other thing would be helpful is if you could walk me through just like physically, where is this person's going to be in the administration building or, and what's an average? I mean, I know the overview coverage of, of, you know, wanting to make an impact and making an impact on the community. But if you could walk me through what the average physicality of that week's going to be? Is it going to the different buildings? Is it, is it, you know, meeting with different department heads and things of that nature? Just to understand that. Thank you.
So the onboarding of the individual will include a plan, like an entry plan that we would have to put together. We have not gotten to the point of putting together an entry plan for the individual just yet, but it is common practice to have an entry plan with objectives in terms of making sure that the person had an opportunity to start making inroads both at the school level, the district level and the town level and in the greater community. And so part of the work that we'll continue to do with the affirmative action committee is work on next steps after the vote when it comes to recruitment, interviews, the onboarding process, the entry plan to make sure that the person gets off and running on a good foot and in good footing. In terms of physically where they're going to be working, we had lightly touched upon the fact that the person would likely have an office both in town hall and in the school department as well, but that's not concrete either.
All right. Thank you, Joannie.
Any other questions? So I had one question and one comment. So my comment, I noticed in the section that lists all the different community organizations, it, it really tries to mention one organization. It's on the first page. One organization in each of these categories, like racial, religious, gender-based. But there wasn't one listed for ability-based. So I would just add like capabilities or I didn't know it says not limited to, but I don't want to leave that out. So like capabilities or the arc or cord or something like that. Just as a quick comment on that. And then I have a question about, I don't know if everyone's pages are the same as mine, but it's the last item on the first page where it strikes out development of programs, workshops, educational materials, educational activities. And I'm just wondering why we struck that?
Kelly, while that's addressed, I just wanted to say that was an item I agree with. I was going to share that too. I'm glad you said that, the ability-based. I'm all for that. Thank you.
Great. Thanks. And I, I know that these decisions happen, not just, you know, this, this isn't, it might not be your item that you struck, Joannie. So it might be something that came from someone else at the town level.
Actually answer that. I want to be absolutely sure, but Lori, I'm not sure if you recall why that was struck out. I want to say that it had to do with the fact that these are some of the things that would inherently happen working in conjunction with other partners that it didn't need to be explicitly listed here. One of the, one of the things we wanted to be careful of is One of the, one of the things we wanted to be careful of is that it wasn't a 15-page job, of job description. So there was some editing that happened so that it would, it would flow and it would read well. And we felt that this was inherent in what was going to happen in the position. But I think I actually have, I might have, um, a marked up version that has the rationale behind every single one of these markings. Let me just look that up while, while we, um, continue to discuss it.
You know, because my preference would be that, that I just think those are really important items, especially on our side of things. And so, you know, I think it's important to spell out as much, I, I can understand not wanting it to be too lengthy, but you know, my preference, personal preference, and I can't speak for the whole committee, it's just my personal preference that those things at least, or maybe one inclusive word that drives that, all that stuff home, um, remain in there unless we have good reason to take it out. But it's just my.
I don't have, um, I don't have the, the comments that explained each edit anymore, once you accept them.
And I realize, I realize it'll probably go back to.
Lori.
Oh, um, and I'll throw it open to Natalie as well. But I, what I remember was trying to be, just be more generic and because it was very specific to the school department side, um, that, um, the comment, but I mean, I believe that was part of that conversation at our last meeting.
Correct. I mean, I have a similar recollection as well, but you know, also to Kelly's point, I think if we add it in, there's no harm. I think it just also adds a little bit more inclusivity to the, the job position as well.
Um, all right, I think I was last, somebody have last up? And I see we have a hand raised from Megan Hanawalt. So can we promote her and see if she has a comment around this?
While she's being promoted, I did want to share that we will again partner with the affirmative action committee to assist in casting a wide net to get the job description shared in an effort to get many experienced leaders to apply. So we'll continue down this road. The transparency has been extremely helpful in being able to get what we have in front of you today. And then we'll work on creating an interview committee made up of members from both the town and the district. And it will be balanced in terms of representation. So we've got some additional work to continue to do and to continue to partner with the affirmative action committee on. I, I, again, the affirmative action committee and the community advocates have partnered with us in a very intentional way to help with our efforts. And so, um, it, it's really led to the fruition of a pretty complete job description here. I'm pretty excited. And I've got the edits from, the suggestions from tonight.
And this is Megan, actually, I want to thank you for letting me raise my hand and talk. I have an answer to the question about where that striked out. But before I tell you that, I just want to thank Joannie and Natalie and Denise and the team that's worked on this job description. I'm one of the co-chairs of the affirmative action committee. But the, that strike, struck out language is actually the first bullet now. It got pulled out and made its own bullet, um, in the job description. You're right, it is very important. So I'll go back on mute. Thank you.
Thanks so much. Thank you. Oh, that's great. Love it. We can solve stuff right away. Um, John, go ahead.
Oh, Kelly, just another item. And, and again, with, with regards to the individual organizations, I mean, I'm not sure, you know, for the nature of it, if it almost could be like a schedule A of referring to some of the organizations as an example, and then having in the job description of, of, um, you know, the different categories, because just to, is, once you start thinking of things that, you know, like two other ability, uh, uh, organizations I would feel strongly about is the Mass Down Syndrome Congress, uh, as well as the Kennedy Donovan Center. But again, then if we have three or four different, um, you know, organizations within a category, I don't know if maybe could even have it as a separate schedule A referring to that. I'm not sure, but I would be remiss if I didn't say those organizations since it's being discussed. Thanks.
Thanks. Okay, great. So this will come back to us, um, after the second read or the first read, I'm not sure where the stuck board is with it, but.
This is the second read.
Okay, for, for them as well? For the stuck board as well, because they'll have to.
Um, are they meeting?
I don't know. This is the trouble. I'm sorry, I talked over you and I couldn't hear what you said.
I'm not sure when their next meeting is. I think we're seeing it for the first, we're, we're having our second read before they are.
Okay, so they may have additions and suggestions as well, and then, um, we would have to look at those. So, all right, great. Thank you so much. Um, next on the agenda is acting on vehicles as surplus. Um, Patrick, what do you want to tell us about our, our vehicles with a gazillion miles?
This is just a normal process when we can't squeeze another, another mile out of these, we need to surplus them. They've been, these, these vehicles have actually been off the road for a bit.
Okay, thank you. Is there a motion to act on, and we, um, can we do them all together, Patrick?
Yep.
Okay, great. And do we just need to state what the, I'm imagining we don't need to say the miles, but let's at least list what the vehicles are. Motion.
I'll make a motion. Go ahead, Terry. No, go ahead, Terry.
It doesn't matter. I'll second it.
No, go ahead. No, it's fine.
I make a motion to approve these vehicles as surplus.
And can you say what they are, please?
They are, um. Can I give the VIN numbers? No.
I think just 2009.
2009 E150, 2011 ECOWAG and 2007 E150.
Perfect. Thank you. And Melissa, did you want the second?
It's fine, sure.
Thank you so much. All right, any questions or discussion on that? Go ahead, Leah.
Just wondering what happens with these vehicles with surplus, just to explain that.
Sure. Sure, we, I mean, we do offer them to the town. We then, uh, no one wants them. We then post in the, um, in the local newspaper for bids for them. There are, there tend to be, you know, a couple of people in the, in the region that are willing to bid very, very low dollars for these. And it's just so that we don't have to pay to cart them away.
Thanks. Thanks for bringing that up so people know, in case they want to buy a
Yes.
2009 E150 with 20, 250,000 miles on it. Thanks. Um, it's a roll call vote. Bill, you're first? Is that mute? Oh, Bill, you're on mute. Sorry.
Yes.
Thank you. John?
Thank you.
And I, yes.
Leah?
Leah Palmer, yes.
Terry?
Erin Madures, yes.
Lisa?
Lisa Hart, yes.
Melissa?
Melissa Keith, yes.
Natalie?
Natalie Cannolopoulos, yes.
Andrea?
Andrea Thorold, yes.
And Kelly Welch, I'm also a yes. That passes unanimously. Next is routine business approving the minutes from our January 26th meeting. Is there a motion to approve the minutes? Oh, sorry.
I'll make the motion to approve the minutes from January 26th, 2021.
I'll second it.
Thanks, Andrea. And any discussion or comments on them? They look okay? Great. Uh, roll call vote again. Phil?
Yes.
John?
And I, yes.
Leah?
Leah Palmer, yes.
Terry?
Erin Madures, yes.
Lisa?
Lisa Hart, yes.
Melissa?
Melissa Keith, yes.
Natalie?
Natalie Cannolopoulos, yes.
Andrea?
Andrea Thorold, yes.
And Kelly Welch, also a yes, so they pass unanimously. Thank you. Next up is report from the chair. I have a whole bunch of stuff, guys. I'm sorry. I apologize in advance. So, um, first is that we had talked last time about the bystander microaggressions training and Lori was about to set it up when No Place For Hate came out with their information about their microaggressions training. And so, um, you just need to register for that instead, um, if you'd like to attend, because we're, there's no sense in us hosting the exact same thing that they're hosting. So, um, I'm already registered. I hope there's still room for other people to get registered too. It's Tuesday, February 16th, um, from seven to eight PM and you can register on their website, uh, No Place For Hate. So that's the first thing. Second, um, I wanted everybody to know, um, if you're coming to the legis, I won't step on John's toes because I'm sure he's got legislative breakfast stuff to talk about, but I just wanted you to know that I was asked to speak about, um, our trainings on race inequity. Here, what we're doing here in Falmouth in terms of training and professional development during the division meeting. So I will be there, um, just giving a quick little blurb about what we've been doing with Dr. Warnum. Let's see what else. Um, oh, I don't know if everybody got to see Clue, but I just wanted to give it a shout out because it was great. It was finally something to do this weekend was watch Clue. It was super fun. And, um, I have two follow-ups. Lori, these are sort of for you, but I just want to mention them that I got an inquiry about the streaming service platform for sports. And so I'm wondering if we could get a little bit more information about that. The concern is that it's a pay, it has a paywall. Um, and you know, we don't want our families to not be able to see their kids play. So if we could get some info on that, I'd really appreciate it. And then my second request for information is whether or not we can get any data for a future meeting on any disparities that we might be seeing caused by COVID. So like, are, are our kids in any of, um, you know, any special population group? But with particular focus on race, are they, you know, not succeeding at, in school? Are they more remote? Have they gone missing and we can't engage with them? You know, can we look at that and find out if we're doing okay with that? Because if we're not, we got to fix it. Um, and that was everything on my list. Sorry, I had a lot of stuff. John, do you want to take it away? Because I know you got stuff going on.
Yeah, absolutely. So again, we have the 11th Annual Legislative Breakfast. Uh, it's going to be eight 30 to 10 30 AM on Zoom. And you'll have, you know, folks all have the information on that and then we'll follow up afterwards for what comes of it. And a lot of times the, uh, items that come from those, from those legislative breakfasts, you know, one thing that we just mentioned actually, uh, the chapter 70, that was born out of a legislative breakfast, uh, out of the town of Milton years ago. So, uh, the legislators getting together and superintendents and, uh, and school committee members. So there's a lot of good synergies that come out of these events. Um, and then, as you said, Kelly, you're going to have the equity portion afterwards too with the District Seven. And then, um, also, uh, as far as collaborative items, scapegoat collaborative items are, we, the town of Yarmouth, uh, it voted to the, um, the lease situation that we have with the Bridgewater State Building there, the MacArthur Building. And, uh, so that's a really good news and we have a long-term lease set up for that. And just to let folks know, that's from, uh, you know, where Waypoint Academy is going to move, uh, since it is, Sandwich is now going to have a senior center there, so we'll have a, a home for Waypoint. We're looking at other opportunities too as well, but we have a beautiful facility that used to be the MacArthur Building. Uh, and then the only other item, uh, and we had spoken about this too as well, and that for future meetings, if we could do, uh, you know, I'll put it out to the committee too as well, if we could go back to doing the, Melissa, you should move your mouth as I'm talking, so we can do this simultaneously. Or I'll move my mouth when you talk, either way.
I just got bagged for like telling my child to put her pajamas on. First it's brush your teeth.
Brush your teeth.
Now it's put your pajamas on. Dying right now.
No, very assertive though. I started to put my pajamas on. I'm sorry. But, uh, no, and so the, the only final thing I would say is that, uh, if we could start going back to doing the pledge allegiance at the beginning of the, uh, of the meetings, that'd be great. Thanks very much.
Thanks, thanks, John. Any other committee member request for a follow-up or, or, uh, whatever, anything you got? Go ahead, Melissa.
Sorry, everyone, seriously, it's bedtime right now. Okay, so, um, speaking of those fine people who, um, always follow direction, I have a question on if we're going to have school pictures this year. I know it might be a challenge. I was sort of thinking outside the box. Maybe we could do something outside with our classrooms. Maybe we could do something fun with Zoom and have it be like a group picture. I'm not really sure, but I, as a parent, know that I would love to have school pictures. We have them for every year and I would really hate for this, for everything that we're trying to do to keep things normal for our kids. That would be a big deal, um, to families, to, um, students, to classes as a whole. A lot of these kids don't even see each other, um, in person right now. And I, that's okay, but I, you know, you ask your kids, who's in your class? And sometimes they couldn't even pick them out on the street. So I, I hope that we can do something to accommodate that, um, big deal in a lot of people's lives.
Can I just respond to that? Yes, just so everybody knows, yes, we are having school pictures. Each principal is working out a date per school, so we're doing it a little different. We're going to try to do it outside and then we're coming up with creative ways to make sure that all of our remote students are actually included. So it, it may be offering, uh, that they can come and do a drive-by to get their pictures taken as well during a window or send in a picture or, you know, something. So every school is being a little, uh, creative on how to include everyone. But, uh, yes, we are definitely doing school pictures. I believe all of them are beginning in, um, March sometime. And they have a couple of different weeks where they're coming in. So yes, we are doing them.
That's great. Thank you for that update. I, I know our family was wondering and I know the other families have been wondering as well. Um, I just want to kind of touch on something. I know that, um, we have been, um, following the law and the rules and, you know, the DUCY and the MIAA and the state law and this. But at some point, um, I think we can do better, just across the board. You know, when you want to make a difference, you start at home, you start small, you start with your community. I try to make a difference. I don't always get it right. I'm certainly not trying to preach something that, um, I think I'm an expert in, because I'm definitely not. But I think across the board, we can do better. So, um, can take that for what it is. I, um, I just, I've been a Clipper since I was four. We moved here when I was four. I take great pride in our district. I have a love for this town like so many and I do my very best to give back and to make a positive difference. And I just think that we can all do better.
Thanks, Melissa. Natalie, did you have, yeah, I thought I saw your hand.
Thank you. Just request for a follow-up discussion on our goal number two related to diversity, inclusion and the learning opportunities that we have. So a conversation about what we're doing collectively and also maybe individually, we can touch base and see what we've been working on.
That's a really good idea. We need to, because I think we were getting together a list of what those opportunities could be that we could be individually pursuing. So.
Right, it'd be helpful to hear like what, what are we doing individually and what are some of our takeaways? So just to not let it just sort of fall by the wayside, making sure that we're actively working on that goal is important.
Great, thank you. You're right. Terry?
Okay, I will restate my request last time since Kelly lost them. The one I wanted to really get working on was the kids, since we don't have the bowl anymore and we hear from them. First of all, I want to say about the Clue thing. It was amazing to watch the kids because they were like trying to be socially distant even and with a mask and they were just totally undaunted by all these restrictions. And it was, it was really fun to watch that. I wanted to, um, say I would be a liaison person for kids' input. And like, at, between last week and this week, I wanted to get pictures of the T-ticket kids in their spirit clothes, for example. But I know, and I guess I have to talk to Lori about, um, the mechanics of that stuff and is it Leo, can we just put their pictures in public and all that? And to get permission from Ryan, so I'm hoping that I'll get approval that, to undertake that, so.
Yeah, and when you, so when you had mentioned it last week, or last time, Terry, uh, my first thought was I don't want to put anything else on our teachers. My God, they have so much to do. So I don't, I was trying to think through how we could get that stuff from the class. And then I just, and as I told you in my apology, I spaced, so it's back on the table.
I brainstormed and. I brainstormed and how absolutely not to get teachers involved. And so I'll, I'll make an appointment, sit down with Lori and go over what's allowed and not if, you know, like could kids take pictures and send them to me? I mean, I offered my cell phone to collect information, but anyway.
All right. Thanks for reminding me. I appreciate it.
I'll send you a note about the other one with a suggestion.
Okay. Andrea?
Thank you. I had a couple of things. I'm glad you brought up the training on microaggressions. And I know we were going to do something like that collectively. And so I'm just really encouraging that everybody sign up for that because I think there's real power in us doing something together. So we have a shared vocabulary and a shared experience. The things that we're doing independently are great too. But I'm just really pushing to try to get as many of us together there as can possibly be. Unfortunately, when we schedule things, we can all pick a date that works for us and we're at, at someone else's mercy there. But strongly encourage that to happen. And then the, the event on Friday that John and Kelly both referenced, just make sure you, you've seen the thing. You have to actually register for it. You have to send an email to Julie at the collaborative. And I think you've gotten that link. It's just one other step. And I know it's easy to get lost in, in the shuffle of all the emails. So be on the lookout for that. And that way you'll get the Zoom link for it. And the last thing I wanted to bring up was something from Falmouth VIPS. And I know often when I mention Falmouth VIPS, you might get the same reaction that I do. People are always like, oh, I love VIPS. And with Valentine's Day around the corner, I wanted to bring to your attention and to the community, an initiative from the VIPS Board of Directors. And you may have seen some of the social media posts that are already going around. And I hope that you'll, you know, think about supporting this wonderful organization that does so much for our students. Especially now when there is students who need it more than ever. And the staff at VIPS is just going through every hoop that they can and thinking as creatively as possible to maintain and expand relationships that these students desperately need. So be on the lookout for that. And if you're able, please support them.
Any last thoughts? All right. Is there a motion to adjourn? Melissa, this has been quick on the draw with everything today. Thank you. John, did you want to second that?
Sure, I'll second.
Thank you. I saw your hand. Or you went off mute. So that's what it usually is. Roll call. Bill, you're first?
Yes.
John?
Anari, yes.
Leah?
Leah Palmer, yes.
Terry?
Terry Madures, yes.
Lisa?
Lisa Hart, yes.
Melissa?
Melissa Keith, yes.
Natalie?
Natalie Kinalopoulos, yes.
Andrea?
Andrea Thorold, yes.
And I'm a yes too. We're adjourned. Thanks, guys. Everybody stay.